Somebody's food is here. Thank you. I hope he tipped. All right, Dan, you do not get any. No, the other Dan, because he was staring, he was eyeballing that barbecue. All right, it's time, we're streaming, we're good. Smithville Board of Aldermen, work session is now called to order. First item on the agenda is the discussion of enforcement of chapter 235 dog and cat regulations. Ms. Wagner?
Mayor and Alderman, when I kind of walk through information that was included in the packet, and I do apologize, there was some information that there were multiple versions of the memo I was working on remotely, and then LinkedIn and the wrong one got posted. So there's a second alternative that didn't get included in the information posted, and I'll walk through that here in a minute as well. But to briefly outline kind of the information in the memo. Ordinance, Chapter 235 outlines the city's requirements for operating a city pound, either internally through staff or contracting that out. Outlines regulations for the licensure of dogs and cats, limitations relating to the number of animals kept, abandonment, running at large, and all of those items we would anticipate as part of enforcement of animal control issues and concerns. The police department provides our primary response. So when we get a call of a vicious dog or a dog at large, it is the police department that responds to the call. Those animals, if they are at large, are collected and housed at the facility, known as Megan's Paws and Claws, that's located on the water treatment plant facility property. Once the dog is taken to the pound, it is housed in an intake facility for observation. It's held for 10 days or until it's claimed by the owner if we're able to make contact with the owner. During the time that it's there, we do monitor for any obvious health concerns or issues, and obvious medical attention is provided. Once that 10-day period has expired, the dog, if not reunited with its owner, has, is moved to the main pound building and is available for adoption. All dogs are brought up to date on vaccinations and are spayed or neutered before adoption. In addition, they are microchipped. In the case of a vicious dog or dog bites, by ordinance, a dog that bites a human is required to be quarantined for at least a 10-day observation period, either at a vet of the owner's choosing or at the city pound. Once that 10-day period has expired, the dog can be returned to the owner, assuming there are no signs of illness. The process of issuing citations is handled through the court system like any other ordinance violation. I will note that response in vicious dog situations is really pretty low. As Chief and I talked through this situation and animal control in general, one to two occurrence per year at the most, and really in recent memory, we don't remember. Yeah, yeah, two a year would be a busy year, as Chief just said. We currently work with a nonprofit, Friends of Megan's Paws and Claws, to provide support to the facility and support of the impounded animals. The original facility, the one that the animals are held in initially, is the facility that was built in 2010 with monetary and in-kind donations from the community in response to Megan's Paws and Claws. Funding and donations were spearheaded by Tom and Lori Kissinger, Megan's parents. A similar facility was constructed with city funds in 2017 or 2018. This facility provides the ability to separate dogs to ensure that none are ill, and it provides space to quarantine any aggressive dogs. An administrative coordinator in the utilities department, Division of Public Works Department, works with the police in providing the day-to-day care of those animals. This position has also worked with Friends of Megan's Paws and Claws to coordinate adoption of unclaimed animals. Approximately 25 to 30 animals are adopted annually. There's information in the packet that does include statistics from the shelter as well as, excuse me, from the pound, as well as police information on responses. The, on average, six to seven dogs are adopted, excuse me, impounded on a monthly basis. Most are returned to the owner or adopted in less than 30 days. The second piece of information is included in the packet outlines kind of the timing of when calls for service related to animals are. Police responses for calls really reach a peak between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., with the most responses around 4 o'clock. And on the days of the week, really Friday is the highest need. It's kind of a heat map included in there. As we've noted in the past, the Water Master Plan, which was completed in 2018, outlines a need for expansion of the water treatment plant to provide water services for the community as we continue to grow. Because the existing buildings are in the footprint of that expansion, that expansion will affect the pound buildings. Over the course of the last several months and following discussion at the retreat, staff, the mayor, and representatives of both Friends of Megan's Paws and Claws have met. We've also met with a local veterinarian as a response to a meeting invite we sent out to all local veterinarians and those who provide boarding services for animals to try to identify an alternative for looking at care that might be a contracted service. And former Alderman Kelly Kabelski helped spearhead some of the review and those discussions and efforts. Wanted to try to determine the best way to enforce Chapter 235 in line with other priorities throughout the community. So based on the ongoing needs and priorities, it staff's recommendation at this point in time that we issue a request for proposals based on board input here for animal care and housing services to meet the needs of Chapter 235. It would be anticipated that an agreement would provide for the observation and care of animals collected. The police would take the animals as they're collected to the facility, and they would be monitored, a medical assessment would occur. There would also be behavioral observation to determine suitability for adoption, and then coordination of return to owners would be taken care of through that contractual relationship. An RFQ and evaluation process would anticipate cooperation by whoever would receive that. It would basically, we anticipate a contract in coordination with Friends of Megan's Paws and Claws, particularly in the adoption process or in any way that they found appropriate. What did not get included, it was in a version that didn't get pulled over to the final document. An alternative approach that staff has reviewed would be to reevaluate the proposed police facility construction that we'll talk about here in a bit, and we've had conversations about needs in the police department for inclusion of space for animal impoundment and care. This would also include a need for revision of staffing needs in the organization to add an animal control position within the police department. At this time, we don't have full cost of what that would be, but that information could be developed. In any case, we don't anticipate a solution to the problem in, as we conclude this calendar year, but as we work through the next fiscal year, and really, expansion of the water treatment plant is not included in the CIP until 2027, so we do have some time to work through this. But we do need some direction or feedback from the board as to a preferred option for moving forward, whether that be issuing an RFQ for looking at that care or including information and review of a police department facility. Both of those, we would anticipate would need to occur this fall to help us look at the second item on the agenda, our police department needs, but then also to provide opportunities to evaluate what costs and services might be able to be provided. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but we are looking for direction from the board this evening.
May Cynthia have some questions for you?
One second, Alderman Russell, please fold. I first wanted to hear from former Alderman Kabelski and Dawn, if you have anything to add before the, we open this to the Alderman. Do you have anything to add, Kelly? Will you step up so that those online can hear you? There you go.
Kelly Kabelski, former Alderman. And discussions, looking at everything, in my opinion, I would like to see an RFQ go out or RFP to go out to contract with either a local vet or a boarding facility to house all of it. I just, in my opinion, I don't feel there's that large of a need yet for city limit animals. I would like to see maybe eventually talking with Megan's Paws and Claws or Friends of Megan's Paws and Claws to look at fundraising, looking at more of a regional, maybe working with Platte County and Clay together to do a shelter of some sort and work with them, because I think Platte County is also in need of a shelter.
You can carry it with you.
So anyway, so that's a discussion I like to have with you guys, be smarter than the microphone. So I just think there's just a bigger need outside the city limits. But coming from the city standpoint, I feel that contracting with a vet or a boarding facility to do the in-house stuff, I think would be the more financial route to go. So.
Thank you. Dawn, do you have anything to add? Figured you did, so I'll make sure you get your time. Chasing dogs.
I'm Dawn, I don't think we've met, you're Leah, nice to meet you.
We tried to steal your tacos Thursday, but.
I know, right? They were really delicious. As a stakeholder, I would like to ask to be involved in conversations around planning. I think it's a big thing, while it sounds like.
Can you make sure you talk to the mic so I can hear you?
Yep, I have an Italian voice that typically carries, sorry. I see good and bad in outsourcing. Outsourcing seems to be the simple fix, I don't think it's a long-term fix, that's just my opinion. I see opportunities for partnering, and I'd really like us to partner with you guys. We've already raised over what you use as an annual budget for your current pound, and I feel strongly that this community is very, what's the right word, committed to making things successful for the animals in Smithville. I don't think we could stop there, obviously, we've got a lot of ability to move the threshold forward. We weren't, we really wanted to be involved in more of the planning process, and we weren't able to really get into the details of anything because the meetings never happened. So I'm a little concerned about that. I think we've seen Platte County, for example, we do have a county problem, we legit do, but that's not a Smithville problem. So we need to keep them separate. So while I agree we need to advocate for Platte County and Clay County, and I plan to do so, I want to continue to advocate for Smithville. My concern is if we outsource, what happens? When the contract ends? What happens then? We had that happen in Platte County, the Dr. Jackson was the outsourced, and years later, he realized he was losing money, right? So while I agree there's good, there's also bad, and it also is going to be a difficult story to tell the residents of Smithville that funded the original facility, that now it's just going to go away. I don't know how that's going to work, that's not going to feel good. I love your idea of moving to the police department and that space. I think that if we talked and worked together and partnered, I think we could probably raise funds to stand up a net new there versus outsourcing it. That's where I'd like to see us go. It's not going to happen overnight, but it could happen. And like I said, in six months, we raised more than the annual budget. I feel strong about it. I worry, again, that if we outsource to it, and this is my personal opinion, if we outsource to a vet, that the current situation with both of our vets in Smithville, they don't have any fencing, they don't have the ability to do enrichment, they don't have 24/7 staff, they don't have anyone to do marketing. I mean, there's just a big gap there, I don't know that we'd be going forward. It's my two cents. That's high level, sorry, I can go into detail, but I don't think you guys want to. I would just like to ask that you hold off on the RFP, and that instead, can we maybe form a subcommittee and work as a subcommittee and come up with other solutions and see if we can't help you guys financially get that solution?
Yeah, and I'll see what the Alderman have to say, but one of the, usually with our committees, they require residency. And as you know, you're not a Smithville resident, so that makes it difficult when we come up with committees. But partnering with a nonprofit is definitely an option, but talking to the sheriff in Clay County, there is a regional issue. The, so, we'll open it up to the Alderman, if you have anything else. Kelly, do you have something else? Yeah, come on up.
I definitely want to, I think whichever direction we go, if we did the contract, whatever, absolutely, it's going to take you guys with them to make this happen, period. So I just want you to think that was, I was not pushing you guys out. We have to do this together, whichever route we go. I just want you to make sure that, no, this is going to be, in the long term, I think fundraising to do the regional, it's going to have to be, it's going to outgrow anything. Like you said, the vet could discontinue service, I get that, but I just want you to know that we definitely have to work together.
Trying to speak for what I see.
Hey, could you talk on the mic, please?
Sorry, my heart is with the animals. My heart is with those that care for the animals, you guys, the staff there, hands down. Can't say enough good stuff about it. But the reality is, there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, and I don't think you see that unless you're there. There's a lot of love there, there's a lot of, you know, like I said, I run into Melissa at 1:00 in the morning at Blue Pearl with one of ours that was injured up there, you know, she doesn't have to do that stuff. And it's not just Melissa, I see them all go above and beyond, and God bless them that they do that. I just want to see that we're not going from having a nice facility, we do have a nice facility, we really do, it could be better, and I'd love to make it better, I'd love to earn the funds to make it better. But at the same time, if we go to one of our vets in the current state that we have, they're going to be stuffed in a kennel, and they're not going to get what they need as far as enrichment and yards. We have no fencing on 169, which is just terrifying to me. I don't see them having the staff to go walk them three times a day or give them the freedom. Currently, they have the freedom to go into the outdoor enrichment area for like two hours, right? How's that going to work? I think we're going backwards, that's just my opinion.
I think all those things are going to be addressed in an RFQ also.
And Mayor, that was one thing that I wanted to outline also is, and we have had conversations about what would be included in care and those desires. Those are things we've included in that discussion, there actually was a meeting that we did invite because the city provided service at this point in time. And so we did invite all the veterinarians in the community, as well as those both in the community and within a reasonable distance who board animals to kind of walk through those expectations of what would make sense from the care and the care that we're providing at this point in time and get some feedback that helps staff understand that it would be something that we felt that we could put an RFQ together to come up with, looking at outsourcing those services as a means of providing some assistance for us. It would be nice to be able to have a regional solution so that there were services provided by a larger entity that we could all work with, because it is something that is, you know, as we've said, we also are balancing priorities of funding for all of the needs throughout the community.
Well, and as you mentioned, this is the problem we have to solve by 2027. We're not going to solve it today. We're not going to solve it tonight, we're not going to solve, even if we added it as the police department, that's not going on the ballot till April. As we know, if that passes, then we've got months and months of financial things to deal with, right? Bonds and sales tax and everything else, so nothing's going to be finalized tonight. We appreciate the input, and if there's anybody else from the public.
Mayor, can I make one other point, just in response to talking about an RFQ process? Because I really think this ought to be a request for qualifications. A request for proposals is something we send out and we take the low bid. A request for qualifications is we outline what it is we're looking for, and we have submittals that are reviewed. It's like selecting an engineering firm or some type of professional service, which was what we believe this would be. A number of the members of the board have participated in processes before where we have done an RFQ where we put an interview panel together. And it would be our intent that we would try to find individuals from the community representing the needs and the desires of our animal control services.
It's typically an Alderman, staff, and community member.
And a community member, so that's what, that's what we would anticipate, there would be continued process in that. And I'm sorry, I didn't address that more in my presentation earlier either.
Thank you for clarifying that, that makes me feel a lot better, and thank you, Mayor Damian, as well, for clarifying that nothing's really going to happen tonight. Just wanted to make sure that we had a voice, and I wanted also just really stop and think about the impact we have of just getting rid of the current.
Well, and one of the, one of the issues that you've brought up many, many times is our staff works, especially the water department, works till three or four, and y'all don't get off work till after five. And lining up schedules is very difficult if you have to take PTO to come to a meeting, right? So, and I'm not going to force staff to stay till this meeting to talk through that. So if they're, especially if they're the water department staff that's understaffed already, that we've got to fix, right Chuck? So, that position's posted, right? Nighttime supervisor? There we go, so we're getting there, it just takes time.
Thank you, just consider, we would really like to have a voice at the table.
You always have a voice.
If it's possible to have some sort of subcommittee, while I do not live in city limits, I think.
There you go.
She's also on our board of directors, so it would be real important to us to help, we really want to partner. All right, thank you.
Yeah. We have not budgeted an ACO position.
Yeah, there's not currently, that, as I had indicated in my presentation, anything tonight is to help us understand how we work forward and come up with a plan. It would depend on resources and how we'd be able to fund that, what that cost would be. So, yeah, and I think one other thing to keep in mind as well, you know, we've talked a lot about volunteering as well, and Dawn and I have had ongoing conversations. Currently, the pound is on property that's used for the water treatment facility. Access to that by the public is problematic, it's our water treatment, it's our water supply system. There's some concerns, not that we don't have, we don't trust people that come out there, but there are concerns about that. In many instances, the same concerns would apply in a police department facility. We would have to work very carefully through any process and working we want to coordinate and make all the opportunities possible for assistance through Friends of Megan's Paws and Claws, but it would be ensuring that all parties understood kind of what those limitations and what those opportunities are.
No, so if you look at what Clay County is working on right now, they're working on getting regional dispatch and getting regional services. So right now, even our dispatch is through Platte County. Sheriff Aiken is very involved in trying to get things built for the entire community. We are in both Clay and Platte County, but the majority is in Clay County, and he's got a lake that he now has to deal with as well, now that he's got that as well under him. So he understands the problem, and he's looking at what different communities do, because they also provide police services for some municipalities, so they are the ones taking those calls. Because not every, not every city has a police department in Clay County. Yeah, and if we did an RFQ, you guys would be part of that, but at this point, we're not even to the point of, the board hasn't even said to do an RFQ yet. The board could say, keep it the way it is right now, and don't worry about it. So we've got to open it to the board. Ms. Bunch, you're next.
First of all, thank you for letting me speak. 19 years ago, I stood right here before everybody that was Alderman at the time, and I proposed a dog park. And everybody thought I was crazy, right? Who's going to fund it, how's it going to happen, what does it look like? And I sat here and said exactly how they do it in Los Angeles, and it's with dog tags. And while I'm not happy when fees are increased or this and that, but you pay them, right, as a responsible pet owner. And right now, we have a tag fee of $10. If our tag fee was $45 and everybody in the city limits of Smithville paid that fee, there would be our animal control officer salary. We are having a very, and I second Donna Adams, absolutely love that woman, and I love Melissa. So kudos to them, hats down, they do things beyond any of us can even comprehend. So everything she says, I second it. We are having an epidemic of dogs being dropped in Smithville because it is now known to outline Platte County and other areas that we do not have an animal control officer. So now dogs are getting dumped. I recently rescued a dog that got dumped with bloody paws. It's a very sad thing to see when I feel like the city could do something and step in and do something about getting an animal control officer, it's actually very serious, we see it in the field. I'll give you an example, as recently, one of my groomers, on a Friday evening, got off work and she went home and walked her dog in Harbor Lake. A dog came out of the woods, off-leash, and bit her on the arm, and I panicked and called 911. And that's the process sometimes, even getting to the right officer, Platte County, Clay County, that sort of thing. And I said on the call, Harbor Town. Now I messed up, right, because that's not in city limits, as I figured out. But Harbor Lake is where she lived, and I was sad and scared, it's my groomer, it's her hand. Oh my God, she's bleeding, I was seeing the pictures, it's terrifying, the dog came out of the woods. That's what's happening, so that's real, and I can show you pictures, it's scary, it's sad. And until it happens to you or a neighbor or somebody that gets bit by walking their dog in Harbor Lake or somewhere in the city limits, it's real. And so I don't know how to address it. I can voice to you what's happening, I can voice to you that I know that by the magazine AARP that I just now qualified for, it says 70% of all households have dogs. People have adopted dogs through the pandemic for companionship, for working at home. And so that is an epidemic in itself, like, you know, which is great, right? It helps the pounds get released from some of the dogs. But what it also does is it also puts a lot of heavy burden on the vets and the local pounds because they either move or they get divorced, or that didn't work out so well, now we're back to work and I can't take care of the dog. There's a lot of reasons why people are doing these things, but it's happening, we see it, I see it. We do a pet grooming business, and a lot of times the dogs will come in, they'll be fully matted, haven't been groomed, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, I have over 2,000 customers registered in my system right now. Not all of them are Smithville, of course, but they're Northland. And I care for the dogs just as much as Dawn does, and I don't know how to help. You know, when I stood here 19 years ago, and everybody thought that a dog park wasn't possible, somehow when I was in California, you guys all got together and approved of awesome dog park, it's beautiful, right? It's absolutely beautiful, like, hands down, to all the people behind the dog park, I love it. But who's man in the dog park? In LA, and I'm sorry to always refer to LA, but I've seen this work well. The police would go to the dog parks and check the dogs for their dog tags. It's a citation, if they don't have their rabies shots and their dog tag on. That would be generation of money for the city as responsible pet owners, I think we would do it. I don't have any more things to say, but I would love to be included. I obviously have a for-profit business, Zuma's Mobile Pet Grooming and Indoor Pet Grooming, but I also have a nonprofit, and I help women, kids, and pets fleeing domestic violence, that includes pets. I have had a personal incidence when I was helping a recipient in the field that she was living in her car with three kids in the school district of Smithville. It's a real story, a recipient that I helped, and she had a dog with the three kids in the car. I called the police, I had nowhere to take this dog. I didn't know what to do, I, you know, the outliers, the cities, like, you know, there's people, like Happy Dog Ranch, love them. They will help Smithville, they will help my nonprofit when I have those situations. But for me, as a survivor of domestic violence, I get triggered, and I don't know how good I am sometimes helping these recipients. So I'm not a police officer, I've been to KCPD Shoal Creek Training. I will go to anything that Smithville will send me to, Officer Lockridge, I promise you, I want to learn. I'll do it for free, I'll volunteer, whatever you need me to do. I just want to know the laws inside and out, I'm not a police officer, but I know that the voiceless, like the dogs and like survivors of domestic violence, sometimes they don't leave their homes because of their animals, and they don't have a place to go. And I will just say it right now, that one day, I hope that the dog I just recently rescued, Kai, has not only a facility in Smithville for not only dog enrichment and training, but a shelter to house it in my nonprofit. But until then, I'd like to be included somehow, and I'll do whatever I can with Dawn and anybody else with Megan's Paws and Claws, because there's a need, and it hurts my heart. And I hope you understand, outsourcing, it might not be the best thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I open up to the board, I need to address two things in Ms. Bunch's comments. The dog park is in the county, our police do not police it, it's built in the county, it's 100% county facility when it comes to jurisdiction. Second of all, raising fees is not allowed by, under Hancock. We can raise it based on the rate of inflation, which is right now about 6%, 7%. So raising it four times is not allowed by law. So we cannot fund an animal control officer that way. But I will open it to the board to talk about ways we can actually do something. So Alderman Russell, you had a comment before we opened it up to the public?
Yes, Sir Mayor Bulley, thank you very much, and I apologize if I stepped on some others' toes there to jump in here, but if we're looking forward at least till 2027, I would suggest that we include the dog catching in that, in the RFQ. as well as cats. What are the facilities going to be? Because we do have a lot of cats that are roaming around and they get dropped off as well. I think that that we don't see as much because I think people know that we don't have a place for them, so they don't necessarily call the authorities. So I think that moving forward, we probably should, if we're going to go for this, we probably should be inclusive and also hire a dog catching facility. Whether we go with a outsourced or whether we go with the Megan's Paws and Claws.
Thank you. Alderman Hartman, do you have anything before we open up to the room? I know it's hard to get it on too.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I I was just looking at the numbers. I guess I'm pleased with the numbers. The impound totals were 54 so far for this year. 61% were returned to the owners, 31% were adopted. I'm curious of that 54 that they have, how many were chipped? We may or may not know that. And then just secondly, to the comment earlier from the public, are those numbers when there's dogs that are dropped off, would they not be included in these numbers? I would assume if they're in city limits, we would we would capture them and include those in numbers. So those are my two questions, Mayor.
Chief, do you have any? I know I know Dan Gerhard pulled most of those, right?
What's that?
Dan pulled that nice heat map together for us, right?
Yeah. I don't believe we have numbers on microchipped dogs. I don't think that's something that's on the Department of Agriculture intake form, but it is something we can look at at tweaking and tracking going forward. What was the second, your second?
Chief, the second, the second question was, we heard from public testimony that there's an increase of dogs being dropped in in the city of Smithville, and I just wondered if those numbers were included in that 54 or if we're not tracking this.
I I would say so. If you look back at the history on those numbers, you'll see they're trending up. They're actually trending back towards where numbers were kind of pre-COVID times, and we're on projections to be similar to those numbers or a little ahead of of 2019. So, yeah, that's probably contributing some to the numbers we're seeing increasing there.
Chief, could I have you also clarify, though, and and part of what I heard? Alderman Hartman, you asked a question if some were dropped off at the facility. We don't take surrenders.
I I took I took his term or his wording of dropping off is dumped in town.
Dumped in town. That's what I just wanted to clarify. That's what we were talking about. And those, I think that would be.
Yeah, Alderman Hartman, if that's what you're meaning, dumped in town, then yes, I agree with you. But, yeah, as a general rule, we don't, we don't take surrenders. We're a we're a pound, not a shelter.
So in looking at our.
Appreciate that clarification, Chief.
And looking at our return to owner numbers, it doesn't seem like the ton of them that are dumped. I mean, they are getting a lot returned home.
We get a a very large number returned owners. One thing we do require as well, and I don't remember if we covered this in in Ms. Wagner's memo, but any animal we adopt, we require them to be microchipped. We microchip them before they go out. And before Melissa releases them, I believe that she's putting them online, and we're registering right there in the pound before they go home. So that hopefully in the future, they get out again, quick scan, and we know who they belong to.
Yeah. And on those numbers, if we do we track repeat offenders? We have 54 that, when you know the owner of the dog, that's you're returning home right away.
We certainly can't do that right now like we can with CDWI or speeding or something like that. We rely on on memory and kind of institutional knowledge. There are the impound fees do increase incrementally from second, third, and subsequent offenses. And I do know there are several of those that are paying second, third, and fourth impound fees that incrementally go up, I believe, from $25 to $100.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Chevalier, I think you had your hand up first.
I did.
I don't know. You seem like you're ready to talk.
No, I I was gonna say, I'm with Alderman Russell on the cat scenario. I mean, I do feel like if we are going to expand anything, I think we should also look into possibly what we can do with cats, because that that is pretty much the, I hear a lot more people talk about all the cats running around than I do about dogs. I mean, I know dogs are out there. I just know that I hear cats quite a bit. So that is something. Another thing is, you know, I'm not, I'm not necessarily against outsourcing. I I want it to be at a minimum what the level of care is today. So facility wise and everything like that. So that's I I feel like that could be part of the part of the RFQ to see what those options are. And then and then again, I'm just, I'm not sure on the on the animal control officer thing. I mean, I feel like, you know, I the calls are just, it's if we're going to have them go to this facility, I'm just not sure that there's enough time, you know, for them to the to enough work for them essentially. So I'm curious if there could be like an on-call type arrangement made if we were going to do an animal control officer type thing.
I think that absolutely is something that we'd have to look at. That's one of the things that, as we've said, kind of the beauty of not having to have an answer tonight is what are those kinds of things that we could look at? I'm not sure what on-call would look like, but that's something that we can incorporate into a review.
Anyone else in there? Dan?
Alderman.
Now that we have time and everything else we've been doing in Smithville, we've been diligently looking at a long-term solution, 10-year plans, 20-year plans. And we have time for this. You know, I do respect those who are passionate about animals, and I do respect those who are worried about money. Instead of trying to do something quick or within just a couple of years, let's investigate with a BFQ or RFQ to to look at what do we really need or foresee in the future? And what's the best solution? It may be a multiple process of what can we do right now? What can we do with sharing jobs? Will we grow to a whole need for a whole officer? And is the cat situation really needed? I think it is. But we but we need to look at that instead of just build another little house with a little cheap solution that we will come back in another four or five years and readdress the whole thing. Let's follow the same procedures we're doing with all the other master plans we have and look into it.
With that being said, that does bring up a question that piggybacks right off there. I agree with what John said about what care they're getting now as a minimum, what care they get in the next six months, what changes happen there? That's a minimum. We're constantly going to have to raise that bar. What is the timeline for the water plant expansion?
Twenty twenty-seven is.
Twenty-seven is when we begin construction.
Actual construction and.
So, yeah, we'd have to have something well in place by the end of 26.
Right.
That's pretty much what my making sure that that's clear is.
Which which sounds like a long time from now, but since
Tomorrow.
Since I've been sitting in the seat since 18 and with Marvin, John's been in the seats since 17, and that time has flown by, right?
And I'd say one more thing, you know, I meant to say this too, but you know, the outsourced, I would see that more of a temporary solution. The long term, like, I do like the idea of having it something with the police station. I mean, if we've got that land, we can create a nice facility that meets everyone's needs. I I do think that is great, would be a great option.
Yeah, and I think the conversation came up for working with local vets is because they do have additional land. And when Don first approached me of having a dog run, which we just don't have room for at the current facility. We we don't have the room to do that, that if it's just going to be torn out in five years. And I know even in the past, Ms. Bunch has contacted us, willing to donate a dog run. So she had mentioned her nonprofit. We have the facilities at the city now to accept donations for things like that as well. So you know, Dawn, as you continue to raise funds and come up with your requirements, keep us in touch with those. And all those things would fit into an RFP if we go out for bid on it. Any other discussion? So looking around the room, do we want to have staff start developing an RFP for outsourcing or RFQ, sorry, RFQ for outsourcing animal control?
Yes, I'd like to see those options.
Shipley?
I'd like to see that as well.
Alderman Chevalier?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Well, I'll go to the folks online. Alderman Russell?
Yes, please.
Alderman Hartman?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. And I forgot your name, the city next to Dawn, but if you can get with Linda to get your contact information. So once we develop the RFQ, we'll have your name and email address to represent Megan's Paws and Claws for us, the Friends of Megan Paws and Claws. We'll still be working with the Kissengers as well, because they have been very involved and met with us on this as well. So anything else? Cynthia, are you good?
I am good.
Thank you. We have a couple cells. How many can we fit in one? All right.
And I think.
Will that become the shelter? We build this.
And Chief and I have had ongoing conversations. Melissa, Chief and I have had ongoing conversations, and I think this is something Dawn and I have had some conversations on as well. If we can, that would be one area. It would be great to be able to work in partnership with Megan's with the Friends Group and in coming up ways for a solution on that as well.
TNR.
TNR.
Yeah, yeah, I've talked to some of them, but the the TNR program that my mom participates in in New Mexico, they provide them with punch cards, and they can go to any vet, and then the shelter, the nonprofit covers the rest of the costs. They pay $100 for 10 TNRs. That's all the cost of the volunteers, and then everything else is covered. So coming up with a really solid plan that's actually developed, not just somebody catching cats and taking them against spade and neuter. We need approved providers and a cost that, you know, if somebody wants to buy a punch card for 10, they they have that. They know how to do that. Yep. And most of it's eligible to 501(c)(3) is not us. So we'd love for you guys to help pursue that, and Kelly will be all over that with you. Who are we going to present the ballot initiative? You? Awesome. Chief wants the building, though. I mean.
Chief and Chuck and not all want facilities in space.
I thought I thought Matt's getting a new building now.
Well, it's, yeah.
No, head Cynthia, that's fine.
So just, this is again, as a springboard off of information that we just discussed in May at the governing body retreat. Excuse me, my heavens. Facility needs, Marv, you you gave me a perfect entree. We've done a lot of master plans in the community. We know the needs that we've got. We've been able to work through a lot of processes to move forward in improvement of our infrastructure. Looking at facilities, earlier this year, we worked with architects to come up with plans and designs to address needs for facilities in a couple of different areas in the police department and in Public Works and Parks Maintenance Facilities. At the retreat, we reviewed the information. We've the plans were submitted to us. We presented information to the board in January and February on the two different different plans. As we had discussions at the governing body retreat, there was priority expressed for a police facility. Wanted to go through some information that we've received since the retreat. Since retreat, staff has reviewed those existing facilities, and we've also had a couple of opportunities present, or at least one major opportunity presented itself. And wanted to go through that and kind of some recommendations that staff would make, remind the board also on our funding capacity. Because at this point in time, within current resources, we don't have the resources to be able to support any type of a facility. I also want to note any discussion of facilities, and particularly in our community and in all communities that don't currently have a facility. I recognize a community center as a community desire. We've, as we discussed at the retreat, and as we've discussed at various times, I would like nothing more than to be able to bring forward something that would be a way to be able to fund a community center. At this point in time, it is really not feasible, given the resources that we've got and the authority we have from the state to leverage resources to do a to build a community center, maintain a community center, and staff a community center. Estimated cost for a community center, 15 to $25 million, dependent upon size, what's included. We'll talk in a moment. Our debt capacity, which would be the best way to be able to address that is 21 to $23 million. It will become $23 million after the beginning of next year. That is funded then through property tax increases. That builds a facility. Ongoing operations for a facility of that size would be significant and would potentially outsource or outpace our ability to fund through an existing sales tax or an ability that we have to to include a sales tax. And as we've seen in communities throughout the area, staffing, as we know right now, staffing just in general to keep some of our our operations going, but particularly related to lifeguards, has been difficult. So there are difficulties there at this point in time, and based on discussions that we had with the governing body at the retreat, that's been put aside for for some other discussion. Right now, the priority need particularly related to police department, because they operate in half of this building, we're a community that's growing, and the needs that we have in that area have been acknowledged and provide for a more efficient response to community services and providing those community services. The estimate that was provided in the early part of this year was about $16 million for a police facility. When we look at that, and as we all know, every month this year, we've we've all experienced inflation. We've had discussions at this meeting or in this room as the year has progressed, that projects are costing more because of of supplies. Based on estimates from the architects, if we were to build this next, late next year, they're estimating about 16 and a half million dollars based on current inflationary costs. In working after the retreat, and outlined in your memo, are some areas where it was identified that there could be some reductions to the cost, saving about $1.5 million. The one caution that staff would would invoke or or make sure that the board is aware of is any reduction to a building at this point in time. As the community grows and as the station grows and we need to expand, we would probably see increases that would offset, if we save $1.5 million now, it would probably cost closer to two to two and a half million dollars down the road. So just wanted to keep that in mind. So police department costs 16 to 16 and a half million dollars. Earlier this year, the estimate for Public Works and Parks Maintenance Facility that provided some renovation to existing Parks and Recreation Facility at Smith Fork Park and covered space, locker rooms for our street maintenance, public works, streets, public works and park maintenance, as well as covered facilities for the majority of our equipment, were estimated at eight to $10 million. This summer, we received communication from the Corps of Engineers that they are looking to repurpose several areas included in the Litten Visitor Center, just on the outskirts of the city in an area that two years ago, we submitted annexation requests to the Corps of Engineers for voluntary annexation of that land. That annexation is still under review, but we don't anticipate any problems. It's just working with the Corps. Some things take some time, and that probably will. The information we've received from the Corps is the area where there currently is information about Jerry Litten as well as wildlife exhibit. They would like to outsource or provide for another entity, and they reached out to us as well as Clay County Parks and Recreation for use predominantly for administrative offices. They were really thinking our Parks and Recreation, particularly in coordination with the Corps right there on on the lake, made sense. Through discussions with them, it made sense that administrative function for Public Works could be co-located out there as well because of the communication, the coordination on a number of particularly utility and other projects at the lake. So we would be looking at one area for administrative functions of police and parks. We could move, excuse me, Public Works and Parks. I just moved you all to the lake, too, Chief. We could move the administrative pieces that we had anticipated in that larger facility to the lake. There's another portion of the building across from the information display that's currently really being used for space and storage. That could be used for public meetings, conference room space for for city functions. We could it could potentially even be programmed over time with Parks and Recreation programs. So we have expressed an interest and and appreciation for the Corps reaching out to the city, but a significant interest in use of those facilities. We could provide the coordination and communication with having the Corps just down the hall would be helpful to us. Having space for administrative pieces of those two departments would alleviate some of the pressure we have on on growth in those departments. And it allowed us to rethink design for a facility at Smith Fork, where we could really do minimal reconfiguration to the existing office area. And our maintenance supervisory staff could have office space there. And then we would really basically build storage space. It would include locker room space and, and other amenities for those staff, but at a significantly reduced cost. At this point in time, we've proceeded down the road and what will be included in the 2023 budget is, um, we had included two hundred thousand dollars in this year's budget for design of a Public Works and Police Facility. We've not expended all of that money. We, um, anticipate incorporating that in the 2023 budget for work with the Corps on renovation of the Litten Center for Use by Administrative Staff. And then that reconfigured maintenance space and storage space to include a salt barn is estimated at about three million dollars. So what we look at now is total cost of police and Public Works Parks at just under twenty million dollars. As we discussed at the retreat, that would, and as I noted earlier, that the most logical form of funding for that would be issuance of, um, general obligation bonds. Our authority for issuance of general, uh, general obligation or GO bonds is set by the state based on our assessed valuation. At this point in time, the cap that we could issue in debt is twenty-one point eight million dollars. That's based on our current assessed valuation. Tonight, there will be a public hearing on our mill levy and you will set a new mill levy for the upcoming budget. That expands our debt capacity to a little over, um, twenty-three million, I believe Stephen, twenty-three point seven million. A bond issuance of between twenty-one and twenty-three and a half million dollars would need a financing structure to be able to repay those bonds. And that a mill levy, a property tax mill levy of point six to point six, three or six, four could fund that. Those, the details of that would have to be worked out with bond counsel, uh, and our, excuse me, our financial advisors. But that's ways of, of looking at addressing that one thing that I wanted to ensure that I also indicated nineteen and a half million dollars is what we would estimate for construction. When we issued debt, there are costs of issuance upfront costs related to that of about a million dollars. So we would always plug that in. So within that twenty-one point eight, we've really got the capacity to be able to do these two facilities, if that's a direction the board would be interested in looking at. In addition to facilities at the retreat, we spent some time talking about ongoing operation needs and staffing needs. Included in the 2023 budget, there are the addition of, uh, several positions. We also outlined a need for new, it's two new or additional police officer positions as the community grows. As well, if the police facility is built, there would be a need for some administrative support there. We currently have one administrative staff member who covers the front window. And we'd need to ensure that we have staffing to cover breaks, vacations, those sort of things. But we also have a need for, uh, assistance in our property and evidence. And that could be a civilian position and what Chief and I have talked about is, uh, a position that could cover the front desk, the two positions that we currently, the one position we have in a new position to take care of coverage, the support to the prosecutor and, um, please, the evidence storage. Addition of those three positions is estimated at about two hundred fifteen thousand dollars. We also looked at the operating costs of the police department, um, on an annual basis. Not including personnel costs and not including capital expenditures. We spend approximately four hundred thousand dollars a year on operations and support of the police department, whether it's, um, our contracts for the CAD system. Supplies, uh, training, we spend about four hundred thousand dollars a year. Staff also recommends that if we are looking at valid initiatives to fund ongoing needs, that we look at police department needs from the staffing perspective of addition of those three positions and support of operate, ongoing operating costs, that we provide identified funds for the police department and could alleviate some of the pressure organizationally on the budget and providing services in general. We currently have state issued authority to issue up to, or to take to the voters, the, um, question of issuing up to one additional cent of sales tax. One cent of sales tax generates between one and, one point two and one point three million dollars on an annual basis. A half cent sales tax would generate about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Those staffing and operational needs represent about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Staff would recommend that half of that sales tax capacity, the, the board take that question to the voters for support of police. So at this point in time, there would be two questions, issuance of debt and, uh, police sales tax or a sales tax for general fund to support the police. Mayor indicated three.
Debt service levy.
We do not have to, the, state law does not require the board to take the question of increase of property taxes to the voters. That is something that the board would act on. I would anticipate that if the board wanted to move forward in this way, one of the things we'd need to do is engage in an information campaign. And part of that information would be what debt levy would be required to support issuances funds, if that makes sense. I want to outline quickly the process or timeline. Municipal elections can occur in November and April. There is a timeline by which questions have to be certified. If a question is placed on the ballot in April, the language must be certified into the clerk's office by the end of January. If it's on the, uh, ballot in November, that language has to be certified into the clerk's office by the end of August. So just wanted to get those timelines in heads and obviously that is a lot of information, it was all in the memo. Um, and a lot of it, we did discuss at the retreat as well, but this is refining that information based on direction from you all. Happy to answer any questions that you all might have in this again, because if the board wanted to look at an election, the first opportunity for an election wouldn't be till April, language wouldn't have to be certified till January. So this provides an opportunity for that discussion, feedback from the board and additional questions that we can research or look at.
So, uh, before we start with the board, um, Linda, any public comment cards? No. So I'm glad you addressed the community center, because that's one thing that continues to come up. Uh, that's for the regular session. This is for work session. Yeah, no problem. One of the things that's came up a number of times, uh, that I've seen comments on is, uh, the community center question, Carney's building a pool. Tonight on the agenda, we were rezoning some land for the school district. They spent eight hundred thousand dollar, over eight hundred thousand dollars for a few acres. Uh, to build a community center in this, uh, community, we'd probably need about 10 acres. And luckily, uh, one of the realtors in town just walked in, we have one online as well. Uh, Eric or Dan, are there any 10 acre tracts with services available along 169 that is affordable or for sale? Exactly. Thank you.
I believe the answer was no.
Yeah, the answer was no by Eric, because he looked at me like I'm crazy. Carney's going to spend about twelve million dollars just for a pool, not a community center. They're going to, they had five hundred thousand dollars, over five hundred thousand dollars donated by a single donor to help them start and buy some land. Uh, they have a lot of land that's not in a flood plain. We happen to be by river and we have a lake for a reason, because it flooded here. Can't build a pool in the floodway. Smiths Fork is a great thing that we're going to have that option for the Litten Center. So I will let the, uh, two aldermen that are on Zoom speak first. So Alderman Hartman, you can go first this time.
Thank you, Mayor. As, as the board has discussed earlier this year, um, I believe that we do need to go to the voters, uh, for an ask, uh, to the police station. Uh, I had the opportunity to sit on the committee earlier this year with the chief and several other, um, city staff and some citizens. And as our, as our community grows, I absolutely think it's the right thing to do to, um, look at this. Because every year we wait, construction costs go up. Um, and secondly, uh, Mayor, I, I do believe that a sales tax is something we should look at. Again, this is all approved by the voters. We as aldermen cannot do anything more than ask that this be put on the ballot through, through an agreement with fellow aldermen. So I just want to make sure people understand that this is, this is voter driven. This isn't necessarily alderman driven, although our, our goal is to, um, obviously hear this. So, uh, I'm, I'm for, um, these, these valid issues, Mayor. And, uh, I, I think that we need to grow, uh, we need to make sure that our, our police station is, is, is positioned. Police station and police officer position for the growth that's coming in the community.
Yeah, and one, one thing to go back to the planning, um, you know, the Parks Master Plan talks about community center in 10 years. We've been working on Parks Master Plan and delivering those items that come through sales tax right now. Um, we, we have asked for donations and I think to date we've raised about twenty-five hundred dollars in three years. Yeah, Matt's not, he said yes for this, I didn't see that. So, um, that, that's one number to think about when you're talking community center, other amenities. Also about a little over four years ago, we purchased land with the intent of building a police station. So it does take years of planning on these things. So, um, we have land in hand that could be used for this, so we don't have to go find land like the school district had to do for their bus barn. Um, Alderman Russell?
Mayor, if I could, I would like to clarify one thing also to make sure that we are, are talking kind of in the same way at the retreat, because we were talking such large numbers for, uh, maintenance facility. We were talking about two separate questions and I'm sorry, I did not clarify. Staff's recommendation at this point would be a joint question, because the, the street facility would be, street and parks, the maintenance facility would, would be a lower cost.
Twenty percent of what we originally talked about.
Twenty percent of what we had initially talked about. The other thing I would do want to remind everyone as well as we have conversation, the move for, or the need for the maintenance facility is also necessitated by the water treatment plan expansion. We won't have a facility for street facilities once we expand that. So that's, uh, staff has, had, we recognize that police has been a priority. But we recommend one ballot question as opposed to two, and we want to make sure we get some clarification from the board on that. The other thing that I do want to clarify, we had discussion earlier about animal control. And, um, you know, as we move forward in developing information, we had looked for the board. Would you like to see those estimates included in, um, a police department facility and what we could do? So just wanted to make sure that, sorry, I did not clarify that earlier.
Alderman Russell?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Bowie. Um, kind of going off with what Cynthia said, the, uh, on, on the plans, and I know that, that we're looking at adjusting and cutting and, and try to, to, uh, do what we can, everybody doing, working, uh, really hard on this. But, uh, we have a courtyard, a conference room, a flat conference room, a community room, a quiet room, a fitness plan. Um, it's a lot of rooms and I'm not saying the plan's wrong, I'm just saying, wondering if we need to look at repurposing this, uh, uh, for, um, you know, we talked a little bit about, uh, possible, um, dog pound facility, but then also looking forward in the future. And we're building this for, you know, for a long, to 20 years now, we want this building to be there. Um, our two holding sales sufficient, I, I, with the, with the growth projection. And then also, uh, I think we should probably look at a dispatch center. And I know that that's dispatched outsourced right now, um, with, with, uh, Platte County, but, uh, everybody's growing. And I think that that might be something at least to look, even if we don't get, uh, get it right away, something to look at in the future with this building.
That's a, that's a whole nother same size facility on its own, and so.
Okay.
Yeah, Clay County is working right now and there is, and it's a multimillion dollar project, so.
Okay, leave it alone. Okay.
Yes, we're not big out there. You should, Chief, Chief just lost some more hairs there.
Did he? He didn't, he didn't want to do dispatch.
They turned gray, so. We have some dispatchers on staff now, former dispatchers.
Good. The, uh, the, uh, the two officers that, that were projected, Cynthia, was that, was that overstaffing or was that just, uh, uh, to meet staffing levels? I thought that we were right on.
That would be creation of two additional positions.
Okay.
Yeah, as, as we've discussed before, the overstaffing is what we're doing now to try to ensure that we can always have the, um, staff, authorized staffing on the department.
Okay.
Seems like every time I swear one in, we gotta open. I'm swearing one in tomorrow.
Please. Yeah.
It does. Um, Cynthia, are there any costs? Do we know if there are any costs associated with the community, uh, education process or program? For the voters?
That is a very good question. There would, there would be cost and that would potentially be minimal. We can, if the board does want to proceed with ballot, we can then also, we'd need timeline for what you all would be thinking. And we can develop a plan, a little more intensive plan with estimated cost for a, a information campaign.
Yeah, and I got the numbers they use for when Platte County built their jail. And that was a countywide initiative and it was not that expensive.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, the last thing I have here is, uh, there's, there's, uh, been a lot of talk about, um, recreational marijuana on the ballot. I don't know if that's making the ballot or not in November.
That's, that's not something we, that's not on the agenda, so we need to.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Jumping ahead, sorry. Um, that's all I've got. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, I'll open up to the room. Alderman, you and all. Alderman Shipley? Alderman Chevillier?
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, let's, let's take it to the vote and, and, and let's let the community, um, decide on the amenities that they want.
So as presented by staff with, uh, maintenance facility and police department and the additional positions funded by sales tax. Everybody go with that?
Yes. And may I clarify, is this something you'd like to look for next April, the following in November?
I think April would be the right time.
April? What we'll do this, this fall, we'll work to develop better number information, taking into consideration discussions. Develop better information on what a campaign could look like, uh, and develop actual language as we refine some of those numbers and, and work with our financial advisors on, as I indicate, the mill levy and, and that information, um, and develop the process and come back to the board this fall, so that we can have, know what that information is to then, um, have ballot language ready for certification in January.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure on that ballot language, you know, we, we're very clear, you know, what this is for, you know, the police department, you know, is the, is the main recipient of this. And I think that is, well, is very helpful to, for people to know.
And it's nice that we have a floor plan in the.
Right, right. Yeah, the floor plan and the design can absolutely be part of educational information that wouldn't be on the ballot. But one of the reasons of working through the fall, as well as we will bring draft language to you all to make sure that that would make sense then as well. Okay, great. Thank you all. Appreciate the direction. And well, you've given us marching orders for work for the fall. Make sure real quickly, staff, have any questions from this?
Chuck?
Chuck, no.
Chuck, your office is a 10 by 10, that's it. No one does. Nothing? You're just messing with us? Okay, whatever. Three and O, you can raise your hand every once in a while, I guess. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, do I have a second? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 I'll post, say no. All right, let's take a 10 minute break, because I'm sure some folks need to run to the restroom and things. So we'll start in 10 minutes, Linda.